So, welcome. And so if you don't know, I'm Randy Davis. I'm the CEO here. I had, we put an agenda together. We're going to try and keep it moving. I told everybody that if we can keep it within 10 to 15 minutes, we should be on time. And I think so far, you'll be the third session. And I'm thinking I'm hitting about 20 minutes on my part every time. So, I have failed to meet that expectation, but working on it. First, I'm going to start off with just by saying thank you. Every time we announce the town hall meetings, we say, when you see those out there, if you have any topics that you want covered, please send them to us. Normally, you don't. This time, you did. So, thank you, because it really does help for us to, one, be prepared for any question that you might ask, or, two, just be able to proactively respond to anything. Because if you're thinking it, I guarantee other people are as well. And so, I'll just jump into, one of the first things that was asked was, what happened with endocrinology and rheumatology being turned off? And what does that mean? And so, I'm going to kind of answer that in a little bit of a roundabout way. So, as a nation, right? You always want to start big. As a nation, healthcare utilization is down. Healthcare utilization, meaning how many people go see their doctor, get x-rays, lab work, these kind of things. The hypothesis around why that is, is because healthcare is more expensive to you now. So, before, I'd say that five years ago, and maybe further back, seven years ago, healthcare cost $25. Remember those days? Go see your doc, you pay $25. And if you signed up for the really, really good plan at work, it was like $10 or $15, right? And then after you saw the doc, and they ran all these tests, and you went over to the hospital, and you had all this stuff done, randomly, you'd get like a $200 bill. And you go, "Well, I'm not paying that. I don't have to." And you would call billing, or you'd call your insurance company, and lo and behold, they're like, "Yep." And they would take care of it. Twenty-five bucks, right? Okay. Those days are over. So, now, you've got all these high deductible health plans. You're coming in, you're having to pay a lot of money out of pocket. Well, what happens is, as a nation, as more and more people are having to pay for more and more of their care, they look at it and go, "Well, I haven't met my deductible yet. I know I've got some other things that are coming up that maybe will cause me to meet my deductible, so I'm going to wait. I'm going to wait to see my primary care physician for that physical until maybe, you know, towards the end of the year, where I've met my deductible and all these kinds of things. They're going to cost me a little bit less." Well, then, those procedures don't happen, right? So, I couldn't quite fund my HSA to the level that I wanted to, so I can't pay for this big procedure that was going to cause me to meet my deductible. So, then, at the end of the year, you also don't go see your primary care physician for your physical. Well, in that physical, your primary care physician was going to order some medical imaging, right? They might send you over for an ultrasound, or something like that. They may remind you that you've not had a certain screening that you need to have done. So, you're going to have all these tests done, and that's going to generate revenue. And then, unfortunately, some people are going to have some abnormalities. And so, then, they're going to get referred over to a cardiologist or a general surgeon. Well, if you break that cycle, then what you start seeing overall is a reduction in just people going into healthcare to have something done. Well, we see that too. And just like in your own home finances, if you were told today that, hey, you're going to have to take a 5% reduction in pay, you have a couple of choices. One is, you can go, "Well, I can pick up some overtime shifts, and I can get some more money." Or, you go, "I gotta go get a second job, a PRN job," or something like this, right? So, your first instinct is to try and make more money, because you don't want to sacrifice. But if you can't make any more money, then what you're forced to do is look at your own personal expenditures. And you've got to look at that cellphone plan and go, "Oh, do I really need unlimited data? Can I really get by on something else? Do I really need the NFL Sunday Ticket on my cable? Maybe not." And so, you start really evaluating that. Okay, we're no different. So, as people, as you have fewer patients crossing the threshold of your door, we're still a volume-based industry. So, if you have fewer patients crossing the threshold of your door, you have less money coming in. So, you've got to look at it and go, okay, first of all, can I just simply grow my volumes to offset that loss? Can I get into a new market? Can I tackle Clarksville market, or something like that, and get more patients in the door? But then, you kind of see how that pans out, and you go, "Okay, I either can, or I can't." And so, you've got to step back and evaluate your expenses. So, what I also want to reiterate to everyone in here is, you all are the most important part of the organization. You touch the patient every day. You provide support services to departments who do touch patients. You register patients. This place is all about you. The quality that we provide, the care that we provide, is 100% dependent on what y'all do every single day. And we know that. As a testament to that, the management team knew that we needed to make sure that we kept you. And the best chance of keeping you is to make sure that you got pay increases this year. Now, I know some people went, "It's just a 2% when I wanted more." I get that. But we know that the cost of milk and eggs went up this year. And so, if you didn't get an increase to match the cost of milk and eggs going up, then technically, you've got a decrease in pay. The importance that you play in this organization, we really didn't want to get in a situation to where we could not keep you with the same ability to go purchase the things that you need for your life. We were so committed to that, that I don't know if y'all know this or not, but the management team did not take a raise this year. Your manager and your director did not get a pay increase this year to make sure that we had the money so we could pay increases to the people who do the work every single day. Leadership team, senior admin, no one took an increase because of the importance of what y'all do. We can't be successful as a management team without y'all being here and being committed to what we're doing. That said, even with that cut, stepping back and looking at it, we had to simply look at the volumes that were coming in and say, "Did we, are we making the mark where we need to be?" And the answer was still no. So, at that point, you've got to look back at your core mission of a hospital. What does it mean to be a community hospital? And that leads us to endocrinology and rheumatology. Just like I really want the NFL Sunday Ticket, I don't have to have the NFL Sunday Ticket. I can tell you that what rheumatology and endocrinology do for this community is superb. It's outstanding. It is needed. Those are chronic diseases that need to be treated within this community. But I can also tell you that they're a non-revenue generating service. They operate at a loss. And if I'm sitting there, and I have to look at the mission and vision and strategy of this organization, being able to make sure that I keep up with y'all, and the salaries and everything that we need to do, the upkeep of the building, putting new parking lots in, these kinds of things, and if the alternative is that I have to get out of the business of providing endocrinology and rheumatology, I'm going to make that decision every single time. So, that was what factored into that. Did I want to do it? No. Did we have employees and family and community members that use that service? Absolutely. But we just couldn't sustain it. So, that's the rationale as to what brought us to that. So, in that questioning, though, that came through, and I've got to very carefully message this, asked about endocrinology and rheumatology, the question about hospice also came up. We are in the process, a group out of Alabama has expressed an interest in purchasing our hospice. That is a near and dear service line to this community. It is loved. We're in the due diligence process. Today, they could come back and go, "Yep, we came in and kicked the tires on it. We're just not interested." And they walk away, and we continue on as Northcrest Hospice. They could also come back in and make an offer. If that offer is good, and I mean very good, then yes, we'll move forward with divesting hospice. If they come back in with a big lowballed offer, you know what? We were doing just fine as Northcrest Hospice before, and we'll keep on. So, that's what's going on with hospice. So, can I give you a definitive? Are we actually selling hospice? We're evaluating if someone wants to buy it. So, then, a follow-up question was, well, all these changes and all this uncertainty, should I be concerned about my job? Now, this is where it got a little squirrely in the answer. So, I've promised y'all, that you catch me in the hallway, you come to my office, you ask me a direct question, and I will give you a direct answer. My direct answer is, no, you shouldn't have to be worried about your job. And here's why. We're an independent, not-for-profit hospital. You hear, in fact, there was, on the news today, there was a hospital that just closed. These are small hospitals in very, very rural areas that are closing. Northcrest Medical Center's not going to close, ever. We're basically considered a suburb of Nashville. This hospital won't close. So, you should not have to worry about your job. We are not going to do something detrimental to this hospital to where we can't provide care to the community. So, be relaxed about that. Now, the very careful messaging piece that I had to say, but always understand, if you're worried about your job, this hospital is desirable. So desirable that for-profit companies are contacting me literally on a monthly basis to see if they can get in front of our board to purchase the hospital. So, for your job security, just in the context of answering that question, this hospital will always be here. It's not going away. But we are a fully independent community hospital, and we intend to remain so. We're not for sale. But if you're worried about you, if your gut is saying, "Should I be here? Should I not be here?" Stay here. Your job security is here. Now, to be clear, I did not just say that we're about to sell, or anything like that. Everybody clear about that? It's not what I said. I'm just saying, if you're worried about, are you going to be able to sustain your lifestyle, your kids, and have a career here that can span 40 years? Yes, this hospital will be here. Okay? Very careful messaging on that. Don't go out of here and tell people about this, that we're going to sell the hospital, right? I don't want to answer that question at the board level, because I didn't say that. Okay, so, with that said, I also want to say that some other things that cause chop on the water, some uncertainty. You may have seen some physician groups leave. The most notable one is urology. As a personal statement to you, I will tell you, it is an embarrassment that a community hospital is transferring 12 to 16 patients a month out of here for kidney stones. It's an embarrassment, and it should not happen. I know that sometimes, though, as physicians and physician groups exit this organization, they love to give misinformation on the way out. We have had physicians leave this organization before who left for money. They were offered a job elsewhere in another county with a group that was trying to start up a new service line, and they were literally given about a $200,000 increase in pay. But as they walked out the door, they told everybody it was because of our quality, our service, our reputation. Well, they lied, because God forbid you take accountability and responsibility for your own actions and simply look at someone and go, "I got a better opportunity somewhere else." We can't say that, apparently. So, our urology group gave us about a 30-day notice that they were leaving, and they abandoned this community. But on their way out the door, they wanted to say, "We are difficult to use. Our OR didn't accommodate their needs. Our quality was not as good as another hospital." All this kind of junk. What they didn't tell you is, they fired all their junior partners, and they abandoned five community hospitals in the Nashville area, in the outlying area. And they basically regrouped, they fired all their junior people, and regrouped in the main metro market, at Centennial, at Skyline, at St. Thomas. And they played a money game, because they knew if they left with no notice from all those surrounding communities, that at least for a six-to-nine-month period of time, we would scramble trying to find another group, because they're the largest group in middle Tennessee. There were no other options. And they knew it would take all these community hospitals almost a year to come up with a solution. And in the meantime, all those patients would have to go to Nashville anyway. So, they reduced all their expenses, jettisoned all their junior partners, and they made probably a lot of money over the last year. It also establishes referral patterns, and it just changes the way that people think, and it discredits us as a hospital. I will spend the next three years trying to convince people that if you have a kidney stone, you need to go to Northcrest Medical Center. So, just understand the messaging when people are leaving. It is not because we are doing something or not doing something. It's not because administration didn't sign a lease agreement, which is another messaging piece that came back. It's not true. They gave me a 60-day notice on the cancellation of their lease. So, we are working on all these things. The uncertainty that I know it feels like that's out there, it's just a little bit of a turn. With that said, from a volume standpoint, some things that you need to know about, we have changed, we've always employed our own hospitalist. We're now moving to a management group for a hospitalist. That's really, has to do more with resources. We're just a small group, and so, if someone had an emergency in their life, and they called me and said, "Hey, my mom's had an accident. I need to go out for today." We were very limited on our ability to be able to call another physician in, or a nurse practitioner, so we just needed a better bench. But the other is, trying to stay on top of clinical processes and change and these kinds of things, it's very difficult for two docs who are working a seven-on-seven-off schedule to really be able to go to, I don't know, go to Skyline, go to Hendersonville, and see what they're doing, and how can we do things differently here. It's just, it's a challenge. So, we're looking forward to having that resource available to us to really look at what we're doing and how we do it, and see if we can improve. The other is, we've got a new radiology group coming in in about six months. It's Premier Radiology. Jokingly, I've said that if you can't beat them, join them. Premier's customer service. And that's not to say, I don't mean that to say that our customer service here is bad. It's not. If you experience Premier Radiology on the front end, I'm not talking about when you actually go to get your procedure done. I mean, you call, I secret shopped them. I was calling just to see, I lied, right? I lied. I lied and said, "My son plays soccer. He hurt his hip. The doctor has ordered an MRI, and I'm just checking prices." And they're like, "Oh, well, where, have you scheduled?" And I was like, "Oh, yeah, I scheduled up at Northcrest." And they're like, "Oh, we'll call up there, cancel it. By the way, what's the doc? Do you have Daher or Bochamp?" I was like, "Daher." And they're like, "Well, we'll call, and we'll call, and we'll get an order from him, and it'll all be fine. So, you just said your son's 16, so he must be in school. So, we'll schedule it around 3:30 or 4:00. Which one works for you?" And at a certain point, I'm like, "Oh, my God, it's so easy. I'm going to have to tell him I lied." I'm going to have to be like, "Well, I was just lying, just see what you do." Okay, so, really, really good customer service. Well, Premier, we've talked with them. There's a couple of things I needed. One is, I needed for them to stop competing with me on the outpatient world. They're satellite medical imaging centers. And I was like, "Okay, so, if you can come in and do my hospital-based read, would you stop pulling my patients away from my community to your outlying centers?" And they said, "Yes." And then, they wanted to bring some, their services here from a hospital standpoint. And they want to work with us on our satellite medical imaging as well. So, that'll be over the next six-month period of time. It should be a good thing. Behavioral health, I know I talked about it before. It really is still working. I have to get the sleep lab and the wound care center out first, so that I can renovate that wing for behavioral health. It's happening, but it's probably going to be 12 to 18 months, in all seriousness, before I can get all these things moved. So, it's, you may not see it, but we really are, we're meeting with architects and engineers and trying to make sure where these places can go and what they can do. So, you'll, once we give the go-ahead, you're going to see a lot of activity very quickly. But right now, it's a whole lot of planning and a whole lot of talk. Let's see. And the last thing is, there was a question asked to me, is where are with the childcare, the childhood development center? It's not dead. I really am still working on it. I've been requested to come back next year and apply for another grant that's out there, but I'm still $700,000 short. So, I've got to be able to close that gap a little bit. But it's still in the works. I still believe in it. I still think y'all deserve it and need it. And so, we'll get that done. I'll keep going at it.
Welcome to 2019. Everybody got that down yet? I don't either. An 0128, I was doing 18 all day, all day long, everything I signed. So, I'm going to talk about more about what we're starting in 2019. Who has our healthcare insurance through the hospital? What did we do this year?
The deductible.
Woo, woo! You're a plant. You can't answer. This is for everybody else from Valerie, and anybody else in HR. So, we have the Aetna tier. So, if you're on the PPO plan, there's a $1,000 deductible. If you're on the high deductible health plan, it's $1,500 deductible. I'm excited. Did your premiums go up? Randy just talked about how expensive healthcare is. It's the same way here. Our costs are rising, but through all of that, what we're doing is, Northcrest is handling those costs for you, so that you can hopefully maintain and stay within our community. The other thing that we did is, through our retirement plan, I know we call it pension, it's really not pension. It's a 403B is really what we have, the technical term. What do we do with that? Who has our 403B? Come on, y'all. We increased that match. Now, it may not seem like a lot. I want to give you a dollar figure for what that means for the organization. That's a $70,000 increase for the organization for that cost alone, just to move it. Now, there weren't a lot of people on the plan. So, there's an additional cost that we know that's going to come through there. So, if you are not on the plan, I'm going to take off my CFO hat for a minute and be your personal accountant. Put money in the retirement. You are leaving money every day by not participating in that. So, every day, you're leaving money here in this hospital as you walk out that door. Start small. All you do is start small. You will not miss that cup of coffee. You won't. Or that donut, or whatever your thing that you have that you know you shouldn't. Yeah, mine's a coffee. That's it. That's addictive. Bacon. So, please, as your personal accountant, put money in the retirement, so that we can match it, and that can grow, and you'll be able to see that grow and grow and grow. 2018 is not the year you want to compare to, because it's dunk. But if you only have that 10-year span, it's a positive. You will get money, plus, we're putting the money in for you. So, you're technically not losing any. I'll put my CFO hat back on. The employee survey is coming up, February 5th, I believe. You guys are the innovators of change. I am not. Admin is not. We need your input. If you want to make change in the organization, this is where that occurs. Please provide what you think needs to be done. We value honest, productive feedback. This is your opportunity to do something. If you want to make change, and you don't put anything down, that onus is on who? Yeah, we can't read mine's. My husband says I don't read his properly. The other is, we have a new program. This is not a cost to you. This is a cost to the organization. It is called FedLogic. And you should see this up on your bulletin board. FedLogic, not FedEx, because every time I hear that, I think FedEx. FedLogic. Fed means for federal. This is a company that will navigate the federal programs for you. So, if you're at retirement age, or looking at retirement, it will look through, see the Medicare benefits for you, your social security. If you have, if you, your spouse passes away, what does that mean for you from a social security? If you have someone in your household, or in you, that could possibly get disability, it will walk through that program for you. It's, you know, those are those things that are really complicated. We don't do well, because the law changes, and it's just so time-consuming. I don't know if you've had anybody ever apply for disability, but you know, that's a year at least. And that's after you're denied and reapply type of thing. So, they're here for you. It's no cost to you. And if you do not have this information, you can certainly contact me. I'll give it to you. And also, it is in HR, which Valerie has that for you.
Good morning to everybody. Thank you very much for being here. I really do appreciate you spending the time. You don't have to be here. Communication is vital to this organization, and a vital key for us to complete the mission that we have. So, thank you for taking the time to do it. My name is Chris Locke. I'm the Vice President of Business Development here, and I, like you and everybody else in this organization, are challenged with growing, having a healthy organization while meeting the mission of covering this community with quality care. I think we do that. I think it's hard for us to do that. And I think that it is going to be a struggle from now until the end of whatever our healthcare system looks like. We've gone through massive change over the last five years. If you would have asked me, "Will you look, will healthcare look like this in five years, five years ago?" There's no way any of us would have said, "This is what it's going to look like." We are currently navigating that change. Mr. Davis spent a lot of time talking to us about the different changes that have gone on in this organization. One of the biggest ones being urology. And so, I want to address that first and let you know what's going on. Frankly, it was disturbing, to say the least, to have stand up in front of probably half of this county, at least, over the last year, and have said, "We are your community hospital, and we are where you need to be. We may not crack your chest, but we're going to take care of you for every community need that you have." And then, struggle for urology coverage. It's difficult, right? That's difficult. Not only is it difficult from a mission perspective, but it's difficult from a volume perspective. And that hurts us financially, which, again, continues to hurt the mission of covering our community with care. We're pleased to announce that Dr. Dino DeLorenzis will be opening up a full-time clinic for urology. He's a board-certified urologist. He's been in Clarksville for the last 12 years. He's very well-respected, and he'll be opening up in Suite 308, again, March the 11th. We're very excited about that. We really are. So, I can once again stand in front of the other half of this county and say, "We are your medical center of choice." And we should be. The second thing that I want to talk about is another provider that will come. And I want to talk about this and frame this up in a matter of talking about volumes, outpatient volumes. We've seen decreased utilizations for imaging particularly, along with ED and inpatient, not only for us, but this is nationally. So, how are we going to combat that? One, we have to cover a little bit larger area to garner that business. But, two, we just need orders. And to get orders for MRIs, to get orders for imaging services, you've got to have providers that are ordering them. Dr. Richard Berkman has already started his clinic in the 500 Building. Dr. Berkman is a neurosurgeon. He's not doing any intercranial work, so he's not doing any brain surgery, but he is doing spinal surgeries, and he is a new addition to our community. Now, what will that do for us? One, it will build imaging volume, because now, our community is not having to go outside of our area to receive those services. Two, it helps us complete our mission to make sure that the people that need those services can do that here at Northcrest Medical Center. And I can think of a couple of our volunteers that have needed that and have had to go to Nashville. So, we are pleased to be able to announce that he's coming. He's currently employed at Vanderbilt. I'm not normally blown away by a CV, but I am very impressed with Dr. Berkman. Dr. Berkman went to Harvard for undergraduate. He went to NYU for his medical school. He did a spinal fellowship at Vanderbilt. He's been an independent physician for about 20, 25 years now, and he's been employed down at Vanderbilt to work on their length of stays for spinal surgeries. He is as dramatically less than the average. The reason is, because he does not use opioids. Now, you may say spinal surgery, but he doesn't use opioids for pain control. That's difficult. His results are fantastic, and he is fighting against the opioid epidemic, and that is something that we need in this community as well. So, not only are we going to help improve our imaging services, let's call it MRIs, flat films, there's myelograms, there's a ton of different modalities that can be affected just with his attendance here, and his willingness to invest at Northcrest Medical Center and here in Robertson County, but also from a reputation perspective, because as we call in other places, he's here and can be of service. He is a regional service. People from all around the region will come to see him there. A third, as I've just talked about opioid abuse and the epidemics that there, I want Third, as I've just talked about opioid abuse and the epidemics that there, I want to announce a pain group that's gonna be starting here on campus. You may go, "Huh, how's that work?" Pain's not a bad word. Pain has gone through, any pain service has gone through an upheaval in regulation and supervision over the last several years and if you're still in business as a pain group right now, you are very clean and you've done a good job. And the partner that we have found has never written a new opioid prescription. They are very procedural-heavy. They are working to get people off of opioids and maintaining the people that have to. White House Pain Institute will be closing down their White House location and opening up a clinic in our 500 Building, probably April 1st, somewhere in there. That's fantastic for those people, for our PCPs that need someplace to refer. It's fantastic for us as an organization. Tell me why? Imaging services, right? Procedures. Again, if you want to build your volumes, what we need are orders. Another addition to our medical staff and another addition to our community from a service perspective is Dr. Chuck Mullins. Dr. Mullins will be starting as a primary care doctor in Dr. Lewis's office at Greenbrier. As an addition, Dr. Lewis is not going anywhere. Eight years ago now? Nine years ago. Yeah. Say nine years ago, the initial concept, and actually, Mr. Davis and I went and sat down at his board table, was for us to work together to find a way to legacy that practice. One of the problems that we have in this county is practices just end. And when that happens, 50% of that population goes somewhere else. Best I can tell, about 25, 30% of them go downtown. The rest of them just don't get care at all and that's not good for our community. So, we are pleased to announce his start date. I believe that is March the 25th. Look for him, he's gonna be around. He's already spent a lot of time in our community. He's been coming up and I think he's gonna be a great partner. He's been in private practice for 16 years. He's a community guy originally from Smyrna and he believes, in Robertson County, he believes in what you're doing at Northcrest Medical Center. By the way, when we think about change and we think about urology leaving and we think about, man, maybe we're selling hospice and we know that endocrinology and rheumatology are going through changes, it's easy to look at this and say, "Things aren't good." I want you to think about those four things that we just talked about. What you may be seeing is a change in service line to meet the needs of our community. Think about behavioral health. We have to meet the biggest population that we can find with care. We're talking about four groups now that not only believe in what you're doing here, believe in what we've developed as a county, believe in our market, that they are willing to put their money, their time, and their efforts into building a business here. Dr. Dino DeLorenis, he is not a corporate employee. Just like us, he doesn't have some fund to pull from. The investment that he is making here in Robertson County, here at Northcrest, comes out of his own pocket. I'm appreciative of that. I am appreciative of Dr. Berkman saying, "I want to be here." And by the way, the way that went down is he went to Vanderbilt chair and said, "I want to go practice at Northcrest Medical Center. I want to deliver this community service." I'm appreciative of that. They're closing a White House pain and it's a successful pain office because they believe they can do business here in a better way. Dr. Mullins is moving his family from Huntsville, Alabama to be here with us. Those are positive things. But what it is, coupled with a radiology change, coupled with a hospital management change, hospitalist management change? Say that again. Hospitalist management change? Hospitalist manag-- let me say it again. Hospitalist management change. That's a lot of change, right? It's a common theme. So, what I want to take two minutes and talk about is how we can respond to that because I think it's gonna be very, very, very important that we as an organization, as we encounter new groups and we encounter new information and we encounter new enterprises, new physicians, new partners, is that we are agents of change to ensure the success of this. I don't know any other way to say it other than being a change agent. Now, that dates me to the late 80s, okay? If you remember the late 80s, like Kim does, you'll know. I did it last time too. The reality is, is that it's a specific term and there are some behaviors that go along with that, right? One is we've gotta be flexible. We're gonna encounter people with different backgrounds. We're gonna encounter people from different industries and we're gonna encounter new ways to do things. We have to be flexible to that. We have to be accepting of new information. We've gotta be accepting of maybe new ways to do things. They do too, because we have something to learn from one another and that's very true. One of the things that can make any change fail is the tried and true, "Well, we don't do it that way here." Right? Now, we all know that healthcare is a new industry. It is not what it was five years ago. We take out a knee the same way we did and we put it back in the same way we did, but this is now a consumer-driven industry. And a lot of the partners that you're seeing come here that are willing to invest have made that move and we have something to learn, which brings us to another opportunity for us and that's to be result-oriented and have priorities. And I'll say it this way, some hills are worth dying upon, but it's rare that all of them are. And for us to be able to learn and accept new information and be flexible with that information, we can't die on every single hill, okay? Another thing that we have to do is be a good listener. They are coming in maybe from different industries, maybe not from healthcare at all and they can help us navigate that change to a consumer-driven industry. And the last thing that that breeds for us is an ownership mentality. And an ownership mentality means this, is if it fails, it's our fault. Let me say that again. If it fails, it's our fault. I can't imagine a worse situation than we've got a new urologist here and we don't support them. Or we make it difficult for them to do business here. To use Mr. Davis's, one of his first initiatives as CEO was an ease-of-use campaign for us as an organization. I can't imagine a worse situation that we were hard to use for the neurosurgeon that has come here to do business or that we weren't good ambassadors for the new pain group that has come in here to do business. So, we've got to have that ownership mentality to know that if something fails, it's us because if they succeed, we succeed.
Hello, it's Chris said, I'm Angie Beard. I'm Chief Nursing and Chief Clinical Officer. There's two words that everyone in healthcare fears and doesn't like to hear. Do y'all know what those two words are? Joint Commission. And you can ask, you know, you can ask young people that are just coming to healthcare and say, "What is joint commission?" "Well, I don't know, but it's bad." And my favorite is when joint commission walks up onto a department and people scatter. You know, you can't find anybody. It's like, so I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about our recent survey that was last week and what happened and kind of talk to you about joint commission and a little bit about what's going on with joint commission. So, joint commission is an entity that is contracted by CMS, the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, to come in and do a survey of hospitals for accreditation. So, Northcrest Medical Center was surveyed under three different manuals. Each manual, so that's hospital, hospice, and ambulatory. So, we had five surveyors for three days. One of them was a physician, one was a nurse, one is a life safety engineer, and then one is for ambulatory, which is sleep lab, and then the other is for hospice. So, they're here for three days, surveying us. There's 2,000 standards in each manual and we were surveyed under three manuals, so that's 6,000 standards. Plus, CMS has over 500 standards called conditions of participation. They also survey us under those standards, but they also uphold any state standards that we might have as well. So, when they came in, they told us that 75 to 80% of hospitals don't pass and have to be resurveyed. They also told us that the average sightings for a hospital is over, is 100 and many hospitals receive over 100 sightings. We received 27. None of ours were very severe or frequent. All of them can be, we just clear up with an action plan that we resubmit back to joint commission. They accept the action plan and then they send us our certificate in the mail and Mr. Davis posts that up in the office that we have our survey for another three years. Now, that's the other thing. They're supposed to come every three years. We were due in June. Well, Gina had done some research and she told us that they're coming about three months early. So, we expected them in March. We did not expect them in the middle of January, so they came in and caught us unprepared. So, for us to have 27 sightings and to pass all of these standards, over 6,000, over 6,500 standards, for us to pass all of those when we're not expecting them, that's a great testament to the care that we deliver and the care that each and every one of us do. Imagine what we would've done if we would've been ready. So, the life safety person, they are probably the most, the most critical and that's because they are the ones that inspect for fires, disasters, all the things that, you know, they're the people that climb up in the ceiling tiles, you know, look at the drains and all of that. He said he has surveyed seven, at least 700 hospitals and our hospital had the best disaster management plan that he has seen out of 700 hospitals. Yeah. All of our surveyors said that this is a very beautiful campus and could not get over how clean this, clean this hospital is, the cleanliness. They were very complimentary of that. Not only that, but they were very complimentary of every staff member they encountered, of the friendliness and the welcome, and how welcomed we made them feel, that they go to many facilities that the staff won't even talk to them. So, they were very complimentary of our staff on that as well. So, congratulations on that. So, do y'all have any other questions on joint commission? Now, let me talk to you a little about swing beds. So, we, if y'all heard of us, we're gonna do swing beds. So, swing, swing beds are where we have somebody to say with bilateral knee replacements that does their acute, their acute recovery for a couple of days, but they need a few more days of recovery with, with, lives in physical therapy and Donna and occupational therapy. So, we keep them for several more days instead of sending them to another facility for that recovery, that we can recover them here. That's a huge, huge satisfier for our community and a service for our community and our own, and our own employees to be able to do that here. We wanted to include that in our joint commission survey so that we would have the ability, so that we could have the ability to offer that service. The caveat was, we had to have one patient that had been through that program. Well, I volunteered to be the one patient, so I went through that in December and because I, because we did that, Gina actually contacted them on Tuesday and said, "You know, we're ready to be surveyed." And they showed up on Wednesday morning, but that, there's no way they knew that. I mean, we thought that we had at least till the end of February or the beginning of March before they would come. So, they were already planning to come the next day anyway. They already had their plane and their hotel reservations and everything, so they came anyway. So, because of that, we were actually, we actually got that accreditation to do, to do swing beds. So, unfortunately, we can't do patients until we submit those action plans and get approval from joint commission, get that final blessing from them that yes, we have our certification and then after we get that, then we can, then we can proceed with our swing bed patients. And the ones that we chose to do first, of course, are the ortho, but later in time, we can extend that to other patients as well, some that might need long-term antibiotic therapy or stroke patients, some patients that need further therapy. And so, that is a great service that we can offer and a new service that we will be offering in the future.